Good afternoon. It's 3:00 and I'd like to call the RTA Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Mary, would you please take the call? Bro call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hoagie.
Here.
Ms. Hurd.
Here.
Mr. Carrato.
Here.
Mr. Depp. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Dethser.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Okay. Will we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item on our agenda is taking the oath of Vince Carrato, our newest board member. Vince takes the place of James Newby, who stepped down after completing his terms of office.
I, Vince Carrato, will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties of my office. I will not be personally interested or directly or indirectly in any contract let by the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority and will uphold the laws, Constitution and Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
Congratulations, Vince. We are very fortunate to have Vince on our board. Vince, as most of you know, is the retired chief executive of Shook Industries, a person extremely active in our community, many different boards, knows the Dayton area very well, loves the Dayton area very well, so we are very fortunate that the county appointed Vince Carrato to our board. Welcome aboard, Vince.
Thank you. And I look forward to working with everybody and I appreciate Harvey Hilton giving me a nice little package to take home and study and looking forward to it.
Good. Okay. The minutes of our meeting of November 7th were mailed to all the members of the board prior to today's meeting. Unless there is any board member who requests a reading of those minutes, I will ask if there are any corrections or addition to the minutes as presented. Hearing no requests for the reading of the minutes nor any corrections or additions, the minutes stand as approved. Next item on our agenda is United Way recognition and Mark and Allison will be dealing with that.
Allison's going to come up front and actually make the presentation. She did all the hard work on this as our campaign chair along with some very good help this year from throughout the organization, but I just want to make a comment. I may be preaching to the choir, but I think most people know that probably in one form or another, every single one of us or a family member or neighbor's been touched by United Way program, so we can never understate the importance. The good news is that we did a little better this year, so now Ledford has bragging rights over her friends down there at the other end of the room, at least until next year. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison for the presentation, and she's got some friends to invite up here from United Way.
First of all, I want to invite Greg Tinscher and Tom Malzke from United Way. They were very much helpful in helping prepare our team. And also I have a few team members here that work with me, but I want to make sure that I announce everybody. If you guys want to stand up or come up whenever I say their names, like Vince. Greg Beal couldn't be here today, I'm not sure where he's at. Nancy Schultz couldn't be here today. Michelle Garrett is here. Victor Hall is here. Steve Patton is here. And Anthony Berg, who are from the Department, who also made the work here today. This year we did two different things, and we got out into the workforce and did some nice activities for people. Had a day sale one day, had, well, we tried to have a costume costume, let everybody here to sign up for it, did that day of May, did some karaoke. Just did a lot of fun things, so I think we had a really good time this year. So also want to say special thanks to, for, probably my team, they did a couple things too. McDonald's on Healy Street, their boulges got in there very, very early, put together breakfast sandwiches for us, and sometimes we go and notice that we didn't say thank you. The folks at Donato's, who provided a lot of pizza for us, Burger for donuts, and some of the other places around town, too. I didn't write down all the names, but they provided some donations for us for crab prizes, and that's a good thing. So without further ado, I'm going to present this check, this actually very large check, which is obviously not the real thing, in the amount of $29,283.74 for United Way. [APPLAUSE] And I think you guys might have a few words you might want to say.
Yes, yes, I'd be pleased. I'd like to, first of all, thank the board for having us here to receive this very generous effort on the part of the RTA. Your campaign is indicative of the commitment that this community makes to righteous causes. I mean, you have gone up every year for the last few years, and we absolutely appreciate that. The things that you do do make a difference, no matter how big or how small. We're able to create better communities with organizations like RTA and wonderful employees and leaders who help to make a difference in having very successful and very wonderful campaigns, and yet $29K is good. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
He's winging it, I've got to go off the paper. I just want to thank the RTA and the board for your support to allow this campaign to happen in your facility. I want to thank the transit workers, the local union, and ASME workers that helped this campaign be what it is. I would just say that this year was the most excitement I've seen and the most fun in a campaign that I've seen. They started a month early with Bingo, and to get everybody pumped up and ready, and karaoke was fantastic. I was in this boardroom the last day we did it, and I'll keep the names anonymous, and who was singing that day, but the boys don't have to worry about picking up any new ones. But it's a good start, we're going to work on that. I did ask this board last year with the increase that we doubled from the previous year, it was the 28,000 last year, and we doubled after the previous year, thanks to Jim over there and his campaign staff. And so we had a big challenge when we had early meetings, and we was able to succeed that and go over by a little over $1,000. But for the first time in this special bit money, we talked about bake sales, Bingo, karaoke and stuff, the RTA team came up with $2,132.78 of that special bit money, and I think that's important because it gets everybody involved in one way, whether it's a weekly pledge or their check, or just the one time that they want to get involved, but we find a way to get the total workforce involved, and that's the key that I see here. So I know I said last year to the board, please give me my team back, that was Jim, but when they gave me Allison here and what they've been able, I would say, would you give me her back? But I know that what we do is we create leaders within the community, with Frank doing it ten years back, Jim doing it last year, Allison here, so whoever takes this campaign on next year for our team and our community, I'm looking forward to working with them. But I also know that we have not just one chairperson, we have numerous chairpersons, and they all pitch in and make this successful, and I know that we'll be over 30,000 next year. Again, thank you for all your hard work and caring about your community, but you do make a difference.
Mark, the comments you made in your introduction of the importance of United Way are so true, so I want to thank, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, all of the people of United Way, as well as the RTA, who helped to make this a great success. Thank you very much, and we wish you continued success as the campaign goes on, and I hope you make the goal overall and exceed the goal. Good. Before we go on to item number seven, I'd like to make a comment, excuse me, for our general public. Last year, James Newby, who was the then-president of the RTA, explained to the audience that before an action item comes before the board, it's discussed in great detail at our committee meetings, and it's gone over, looked at, vetted, looked at various information, questions, and so forth. So it gets fine-tuned before it comes to the full board. We did that at our last meeting, and we were addressing issues dealing with our budget. Subsequent to that meeting, we were informed by management that it was necessary to change some of those budget numbers, and therefore we want to vet the same new revised numbers at our next committee meeting. Therefore, if there are no objections to the board by the board members, I would like to table item two, three, and four for our next meeting, so we have an opportunity at the committee level to look over the recommended changes to the budgets that were given to us. Okay, hearing no objections, then we'll just move right on and start with action item number five. Sharon?
Action item number five is the approval of the 2014 board and committee meeting dates. As set forth in the Greater Dayton RTA bylaws, the 2014 board trustee meeting dates will occur on the first Tuesday of each month. There are no scheduled meeting date changes for 2014. The finance personnel and planning committee meeting dates will occur on the third Tuesday of each month. There are no scheduled meeting date changes for 2014. The investment advisory committee will meet on the third Thursday of the months of January, April, and July. The October committee meeting date will be the only exception, with the date set for the fourth Thursday, or specifically the 23rd day of October 2014. All board and committee meeting dates are outlined in the 2014 meeting schedule, which is included in today's board package. Based upon the recommendation of the finance personnel committee, I move to approve the 2014 board and committee meeting dates as detailed in today's board package.
I'll second. The item has been made and seconded. Are there any questions to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Action item number five gets approved.
Action item number six, purchase of service and feeder wire. This procurement is for the purchase of service and feeder wire for the Greater Dayton RTA. The wire is necessary for the upkeep, preventative maintenance of our trolley service. RTA requested pricing on 26,400 feet of 20-ott trolley wire, 26,400 feet of 4-ott trolley wire, and 3,000 feet of feeder wire. Alternates were also priced to ensure the best value. John Seber provided a detailed explanation at our committee meeting, and the supporting information is included in your board package. John is available today to answer any questions the board may have. Based upon the recommendation of the finance personnel committee, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract to American Wire Group for item alternate one for $3.22 per foot for a total of $85,008. Item number two for $3.61 per foot for a total of $95,304. And item number three for $21.96 a foot for a total of $65,880, for an estimated total amount of $246,192, plus 10% additional contingency for overages in the amount of $24,619, for a grand total of $270,811, subject to the price of copper COMAX as published in the American metal market at time of delivery. This procurement is funded with 100% operating funds.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Hairston and seconded by Ms. Simpson. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Any abstentions? Action item number six is approved.
Action item number seven, consent to enter into a contract with a natural gas supplier. From 2010 through 2013, the Greater Dayton RTA contracted with IGS Energy for the purchase of natural gas. The majority of natural gas purchased was used to heat the Longworth campus during the winter months, which is considered a large amount, and all the other facilities are considered small accounts. This usage pattern continues today. As a result of the procurement process, differentials were provided for variable pricing by three suppliers for the purpose of determining who offered the best value. At our committee meeting, John Seber provided a detailed explanation of the procurement process, and the supporting information is included in your package. John is available today to answer any questions the board may have. Based upon the recommendation of the finance personnel committee, I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the Executive Director to enter into a contract with a natural gas supplier not to exceed 25 cents per DTH of a three-year period for the large volume and not to exceed $1.29 MCF for the small volume.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Hairston, seconded by Ms. Hurd. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Any abstentions? Motion, action item number seven is approved.
Action item number eight, architectural and engineering professional services. The purpose of this procurement is to contract with qualified architectural and engineering firms to provide the Greater Dayton RTA with professionals to lead various projects. RTA initially anticipated awarding a five-year contract with two one-year options. A qualification-based procurement method was used where criteria other than price was used to determine the most qualified firms. After the top firms were selected by the evaluation team, pricing was requested. When RTA identified a project, the firm under contract will be requested to submit a proposal for said project at the contracted hourly rates. RTA will retain the right not to use the firms under contract if an agreement on the proposal cannot be reached. Bud, Bob Rzynski, you're Bud now, Bob Rzynski, provided a detailed explanation at our committee meeting, and the supporting information is included in your board package. Bob is available today to answer any questions the board may have. Based upon the recommendation of the finance personnel committee, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract to Chaplin Architecture and Design III LLC with an emphasis on architecture and engineering, and to Norton Engineering with an emphasis on engineering for the hourly rates listed in the board package for years one through five and two option years. Total dollar amounts will not exceed annual budget limits.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Hairston, seconded by Mr. Carrato. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Any abstentions? Action item number eight is approved.
Action item number nine, updated safety and security policy number one, electronic devices and cell phone usage while at work. The purpose of the updated policy is to accurately reflect the expectation of employees with regard to using electronic devices and cell phones while at work. Staff felt the need to make the policy more encompassing of various electronic devices and cell phones. The updated policy more accurately reflects the expectations of the employee while engaging such devices at work. Jim Napier and Gene Rhodes provided a detailed explanation at our committee meeting, and the supporting information is included in your board package. Jim is available today to answer any questions the board may have. Based upon the recommendation of the finance and personnel committee, I move that the Board of Trustees approve revised safety and security policy number one, electronic devices and cell phone usage at work as included in today's board package.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Hairston, seconded by Ms. Hurd. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Action item number 10, administrative staff pay ranges. The Greater Dayton RTA has a salary grade structure, wage scale for non-union employees. Periodically, if not annually, the wage scale should be reviewed. A recommendation has been made to the Executive Director per the attached document to adjust the current wage scale. The scale has been adjusted throughout by 2%. There are no implied or expressed guarantees on wage increases. Gene Rhodes provided a detailed explanation at our committee meeting, and the supporting information is included in your board package. Gene is available today to answer any questions the board may have. Based upon the recommendation of the finance personnel committee, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the updated wage scale as included in today's board package.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Hairston, seconded by Ms. Simpson. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Any abstentions? Action item number 10 is approved.
That concludes my action items. However, financial statements are in your board package as well, and at the meeting, Robert Thomas reported that for October 2013, net income after local depreciation was $351,321, compared to a budget of $214,271. October 2013 year-to-date net income after local depreciation was $2,687,917, compared to a year-to-date budget of $2,337,087. Actual performance is tracking closely with budget just a little ahead. Sales tax update, also at the meeting, Mr. Thomas stated that receipts for the month of August 2013 totaled $2.9 million, an increase of 3.05% compared to August 2012. Year-to-date receipts after eight months are up 3.68% as compared to last year. Sales tax trends continue to be positive. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Good. Are there any questions of Ms. Hairston? Well, thank you very much, Sharon. We now move on to the planning committee, and it's a slight change in the agenda. It says that Ms. Hurd would make that presentation, but Ms. Jones will be doing it in her stead.
Thank you. The finance personnel and planning committees met on November 19th, and we have one action item to bring before you. Ms. Michelle Conley presented the benefits of the Blockbuster Run Cut software from the Trapeze Software Group, Inc. The RTA acquired the current Trapeze Run Cut software in 2001 and is no longer receiving improvements or changes due to the eventual phasing out of this module. The Blockbuster software contains advanced features to handle complex union contract rule terms and to quickly generate bus operator assignments while maximizing efficiencies and cost containment. Other benefits include the automated creation of the project mobility roster, the ability to quickly develop work assignment alternative scenarios, and the ability for multiple users to use the system at the same time. The finance personnel and planning committee discussed this action item at the November 19th committee meeting and recommend to the Board of Trustees a contract award to Trapeze Software Group in the not-to-exceed amount of $104,600 for the purchase and implementation of Trapeze Blockbuster software, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion made by Ms. Jones, seconded by Ms. Hairston. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Any abstentions? Action item number 11 is approved. You have a report, I believe, Janet.
Yeah, a couple more items. Mr. Donahue also provided a presentation on the implementation of the new service along Pentagon Boulevard in Beaver Creek. Items discussed included the specific locations of the new transit stops, proposed service frequencies, and planned passenger amenities. The goal is to complete this new service in January 2014. Also, information was provided in the committee meeting packet, included an update on RTA's recognition of Veterans Day, the planned participation in the annual Feast of Given event, information about the upcoming planning and zoning conference at Sinclair College, and planned how-to ride sessions with international students at Wright State University. And this concludes my report. Mr. Eckler and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none, we'll then move on to the next item on our agenda. That's the Executive Director's report. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few informational items. First of all, the Wright Stop Plaza, our transit center, will be closed this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, during the daylight hours for preventive maintenance work on our infrastructure. It's been a few years since we've gone in, and we're going to do a little heavy work, so we really need to shut it down. The system will continue to operate in our mode where we moved basically back to Third Street, east and westbound between Main and Jefferson, but that will happen over this weekend to get us caught back up on preventive maintenance there. I would want to encourage anyone who hasn't been over to Longworth lately, the next time you stop by, check out the area around the flagpole. That's been converted to our own little veterans memorial for RTA's veteran employees, and this was the brainchild of a few people, led by Gene Rhodes over there, and then implemented by Mr. Seber, who rallied the troops to get the work done. And we've converted the area, there's a little patio area there, it's individual pavers, and all the RTA employee veterans will have an engraved paver when the project's completely done, but it's really nice. We had a good turnout for the event, which was really managed by our veterans, and we had quite a few, and obviously we're thrilled that they're here with us, so we appreciate the good work there. I'm going to pass around some pictures. These are from this morning. The two eastbound bus stops on Pentagon Boulevard are well underway. They were pouring concrete in the second one. The first one is almost done, but we had to move a light post out of that area, so there'll be another concrete pour there. They're actually making very good progress, and we appreciate that. Certainly want to throw some thanks to our procurement staff for the expedited procurement, Ms. Howard and friends, and Bud Rzynski again. I like that name. That's going to be a new nickname for getting this project out and underway.
It's just that I'm so intelligent that, you know, I saw the U in his last name, and I put it all together. My mind just goes off, okay, let's move on.
But it was moving pretty well. Petrick was out on the site this morning when I got out there, and they're making good progress. If the weather holds, we're very hopeful that we can get this accomplished in pretty short order, so it's good, good news. And I'd also, I want to extend some thanks to the city of Beaver Creek. Their staff has been helpful in the last couple of months getting this accomplished. Their staff has been helpful in the last couple of months, getting this accomplished, getting the permit released. So, that's been good, and I do appreciate that, and we hope to get it wrapped up and see buses in the not-too-distant future. So, that's a good, good thing. Probably should throw a rose at Mr. Whitmore over there. The Feast of Giv'n' was mentioned. I think most people know that he has a leadership role in making sure that thing comes off each year for the community, not just on our behalf. He puts in a lot of hours to make sure that happens. Thousands of pies in the back of his Cadillac. He's making a lot of runs. So, that's a good, good thing. One final note, that's another good note. I love to end on a good note, and obviously, you're aware by now that we completed our triennial review a few weeks ago, and the feds left town, giving us a perfect review, basically. They had no issues or findings, not even any that we had to repair before they left the property, which sometimes on minor issues, they will do. So, I can't say enough good. Our two leaders on that project were Bob Rosinski, he's back to Bob, Brandon Paul Chikio was also helping Bob, and of course, everybody's involved in triennials. It touches every single part of our organization, and it's great. So, that's two in a row that we've had a perfect one, and of course, I resisted in my original announcement, but now I'm going to say it. We've got to have a three-peat here, but we're three years away, but I'm already predicting a three-peat because we have great people, and they can make that happen. Unless there are questions, that's all I have.
Mark, have our writers been informed of the pending closing of Wright Stop Plaza?
Yes, that went out on the RTA Alert System. I believe it was yesterday afternoon or this morning, because I saw it pop up on my phone, and there'll be more and more postings as we get closer to the days. And this will be something we'll probably see more periodically, you know, as time goes by. Now that the trolley system's back in full swing, we run a lot of trolley buses through there on a daily basis. It just makes good sense, in regular intervals, to get out there and make sure we do a little preventive maintenance. You approved the purchase of some of the components a couple of months ago. They're here, and now we're ready to do it, and obviously, for us, the best time to do it is on the weekends when we have limited service in there.
Mark, allow me also to add, on behalf of the board, congratulations and thanks to all of the members of RTA for having accomplished the issueless, totally free problems dealing with the review that you mentioned. For those of you who are not familiar with the review, it is extensive, and the number of things one must comply with, down to small minutia, is just amazing, and not to have even one comment is an outstanding, an outstanding result. Mark, you might want to share, if you can, with the group, some of the comments the reviewers made on their exit conference with you.
I would, in fact, and I'll add a little beyond that, you know, in about, I guess it would have been about a week before they were actually on-site, I got a late call one day, and it was the reviewer, who is a fellow out of Cincinnati, and he said, "I hate to tell you this, but because of the Beaver Creek issue, FTA has decided they want to do an intensive Title VI review while we're on-site. And by the way, can I get the package in two days to you?" And I forget how many pages that was, Frank. It was a, so in the 11th hour, we had to produce another package. We got it to them that Friday. They were here the following Wednesday, and a couple of the comments that I really appreciated, especially the individual that did the Title VI portion in the review, she said that it was nice to be on a system where they actually walked the talk, and she spent some time out in the system. We did give her a tour of the Beaver Creek project issue, but they went really in-depth. There was a comment made like that, which we really liked to hear, because we really do believe we do reach out, we try to get as much input as we can, especially on issues when we have to make service changes, things like that. And a couple of times, we heard the word "model" used, which we love to hear, and, you know, we know we've got some great people sitting over there on that side of the room that are responsible for most of the functional areas. There's about two dozen that get reviewed. Dominic Gatto, who is the Region Five fellow in charge of that process, he refers to this review as FTA's version of a root canal. I always refer to it as root canal without anesthetic, because they dig deep. The desk review starts months ahead of time, and thank God, we don't have to print it all anymore, but the desk review, literally, there's piles and piles of compliance. They sift through it, and then they decide between the desk review and the site review what else they want to see and do while they're here, and they basically have the run of the place. They'll go back into John's shop and say, "I want to see the preventive maintenance records on Bus 1038." And we get those out, they go through those, so it's really in-depth, and the feds really mean it to be productive. They want it to be a positive sort of visit, and I know we all see it as maybe something else, but I do believe that their goal in the end is just to make sure we are compliant, and that we're a good, you know, grantee, and that's what we hope we are, and I think we're establishing that reputation with the help of the folks over on that side of the room, especially that we're kind of a go-to system. If FTA needs our help, you know, they'll come to us, and I think that's a great thing. It's good to have that reputation.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, and certainly you and your staff make us, as the Board of Trustees, proud to be affiliated with the RTA, and I certainly hope the citizens of Montgomery County appreciate all the efforts that you put in in providing public transportation for this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Is there any old business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the board? If not, we now get into our public comments section, and before we start with that, we ask all of the people who will be making presentations, and yeah, will be having a portable mic to bring to your location, but there will be lighting over here. You're all entitled to three minutes in your presentation. The timing will not start until after you give your name and address. Then the three minutes will start, and that will be the green light. When you have a half a minute left, it will turn to yellow to give you some feeling that the three minutes are up, and then when the light turns red, we will have, that would mean your three minutes, and then cease your presentation. I'll just call him the sequence in which the names were given to me. The first one that I have, Ms. Sandra Smothers.
Good afternoon, Ms. Smothers. Montgomery County. Oh, good afternoon. I'm Sandra Mae Smothers. I'm a citizen of Montgomery County, been here all my life. What I'm here to speak about today, Mr. Board President and Board Members, I want to know what is the policy of people having DWIs, drug charges, working for RTA? That's my first question.
Mark, you want to answer that, or Jean?
Well, we'd be happy to give you a copy of our policy. It's a very strict policy, and it's quite lengthy, and it reflects the requirements of the Commercial Driver's License Act, which is a federal act, and we are in full compliance with that. I'll just add to that that we go a little bit of a step beyond. We actually monitor our all-employees licenses on a routine basis, even though they're required. If you're a commercial license holder like I am, I'm obligated by law, if I have an incident in a vehicle, to report it to my employer. We go beyond that, and we use a service called Samba, in which they do electronic checks on all our licensed drivers on a very frequent basis, so that if something happens and by chance someone did not report it, we would get that information anyway. But we're happy to give you the policy we have.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
My next question is directed to you, Mr. Donahue. 65, 66. Our seniors are having a problem with this fixed route bull crap, okay? We get a different driver every day. This morning, the driver, she didn't even want to get off the bus and help the seniors, and that is not right. We are people, and we are human beings, and we do not want to be treated dirty, okay? We want to be treated like human beings. We getting sick and tired of it. This young lady right here, you have to put her, you can't speak right now. This young lady right here, you have to put her wheelchair on backwards, not forward, backwards. That way, you can get her down safety. These drivers, some of them have been very nice, some of them, I know them from Project Mobility. Okay, they were fine. They did a good job. Some of them don't know the route. I got to tell them which way to go from point A to point B. I'm not your trainer. You don't pay me to do this. But what I'm saying is, we need our combo drivers back on that route, because they know what to do, they got their bungee cords, and we need them back. Now, I'm going to say it. You should not never eliminate it. It is not right. We seniors should never have been treated like we've been treated. We getting dogged, even on Project Mobility also. Half the time, they're late picking you up, or you late getting to appointments. These doctors going to charge us $50, $40, $30. We don't have that kind of money. We on a fixed income. And I'm getting a little sick and tired of it.
But Allison and I would-
Oh, one more thing, and where is this money at? 34.785126. Your revenue is up, you should have these routes restored that you promised the people.
Allison and I would be more than happy to talk to you about-
These routes are needed to be restored back like they should be.
We appreciate your input. We'd be happy to sit down and talk to you. I'm aware of only one complaint since we've made the switch. It had to do with the bungee cords.
And we got two complaints.
Well, good, and we'll be happy to meet with you at the end of the meeting here and get specific complaints about specific drivers, and I can assure you that we have taken steps to instruct the drivers before they've gone out, and we don't anticipate that there will be problems. But thank you.
Okay, moving on then to Mary Pollard, and let me make a suggestion. If someone else has a question that they want addressed, I would suggest you wait until your three minutes are up, otherwise you wind up losing valuable time to speak since the clock keeps running. So, we'll answer the questions if they're answerable at this time, after the three minutes. I have Mary Pollard as the next person to speak.
My name is Mary Pollard, and I ride to Project Mobile. That's where I have, I'm having much trouble. This morning even, I would like to ask the question, what does it mean when your person that schedule you, promise you that you are going to go to your destination, straight to your destination? So, this morning, I'm using this as an example. I had to go to Right Pack Credit Union at 9:00. They were supposed to pick me up at 8:20. They picked me up at 8:40. I fortunately got to the Right Pack Credit Union two minutes after 9:00. So, luckily, it wasn't too busy, so I got out on time. I was supposed to be there at 10:00. My pickup was supposed to be at 10:00. I'm leaving there, and I asked them, and I said, "I'm going to church. We, our pastor expired. We are having visiting for the beginning of where peoples can come in and give their condolences to the family and to visit, to see him." When I got, the bus came for me. It came at 10 minutes after 10:00. So, I asked the driver, because the one that scheduled me told me to ask. So, I asked the driver, was he carrying me straight to the church because of what was being happened, because we knew we have a big crap? He proceeded to leave Seaverton, go all the way to Hoover, and you know where Hoover Place is? The back where the new houses are and that new building factory is? Well, he went back there to get this one lady who was in a wheelchair like I was, and then he proceeded and carried her to her destination before I could get to mine. So, when I got to my destination, it was quarter to 11:00. I only had 15 minutes to get in there and do what I had to do, and I felt that was mistreating me, because I had been promised so faithfully I would get there early. And this is not only happening today, it happens all the time. Sometime, we have to go riding two hours and so forth. So, I want to know, what is the procedure you are going to do to help us seniors out with this? And that's my end of my question.
Ms. Pollard, maybe at the end of the meeting, you could meet with Allison and Mark and discuss that further. Okay. Thank you. The next person that I have is Mary Miller.
RTA Board Members, Mr. Hodge. The trip that she's speaking of-
Excuse me, could we ask you to speak in the mic?
Okay, the trip that she is speaking of, I scheduled for her. I was assured that she would be picked up at 8:25, got into the Credit Union by 9:00, picked up at 10:00, taken straight to the church at 380 South Broadway by 10:19, because they did understand that this was a wake she was going to, and there were time constraints. When she told me she didn't get to the church until 10:45, I had to question, were they still going to pick her up at 11:19? Because that had been pickup time. They picked her up at 11:20. So, there, you only gave her 30 minutes, and their policy is you have to be off the bus for an hour. So, at some point, your policy went to a hell in a handbasket, and her trip just became another circumstance that she had to deal with. This is something that happens all of the time. I have been told, when you schedule the ride, let them know the time that you need to be there, the time that you need to be home. It doesn't help. You still get the same treatment. The other thing that I wanted to find out about RTA employees that drive company vehicles, are these leased vehicles, or has the company actually purchased them and are at the disposal of any RTA employee driving them? Because it's been brought to the, let me get it right, Montgomery County residents for better bus services, that we've had one safety director with DUIs, we've had RTA car impounded and paid for by RTA to get it out, we've had RTA transporting the person back and forth to work while their license, I guess, was under suspension or under question, and this just seems like a lot for one person. Is this something that's extended to every RTA employee that might have a problem or an issue? And if not, is this something that RTA was reimbursed? Because it does cost money to do this, taking a second employee to transport the first employee through no fault of RTA's, but I guess their need of that person. The other thing was, if they're leasing these cars and there's mileage to be paid, how is the mileage monitored, or is it tracked? Because this is something else that extends a lot of money out of the budget, and the combo drivers that Ms. Smothers spoke of, they were definitely a unique thing provided by RTA. And when you have something that unique, giving service, you should acknowledge that service, if not by payment, at least by keeping them on those routes, so that the people that ride them are able to get the services you claim to provide.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miller. I also suggest that you stay with Ms. Pollard at the end of the meeting and discuss this with Allison and Mark, unless there's something you'd like to say now.
I'd be happy to talk to her specifically, because I'm not sure where you're getting that information. We don't lease, these are not leased vehicles. We do have four vehicles that are assigned to employees with commuting privileges, which is down from 14 when I arrived here eight years ago, so we're very careful about that. We have rules for everything we do here, and I always caution people, as my dad used to tell me, believe half of what you see and none of what you hear. So, we should, but I'm happy to meet with you and talk specifically about the information, where you got it, and hope to clarify if I can.
Thank you, Mark. The next person is Ms. O'Brien. Yep.
Okay, number one.
State your name and address, please.
Florence O'Brien, Brookview Place. Number one. The bus that we have for groceries, I don't know who ordered it, but whoever did, God help them. When we get people on, there is one bench seat. The bench seat on the other side is picked up to put the grocery carts. But then you have to sit on a seat facing the front. You have two steps to go up to get up there, then you've got another step to get into the seat. Some of us cannot do that anymore. Some of us are in wheelchairs or walkers. I can't go- I can't go up those stairs. I have a habit of falling, and I'm not the only one. Then we have it where the seniors, now, I'm talking about Brookview Place, you have a bus stop in front of, on the street, on Main Street. These are seniors that are taking the buses. One bench, no protection from the weather at all. The same with across the street, no protection at all. And if you're going to Good Sam North, and you have to catch from the 7 to the 16, no protection at all from the weather. I'm sorry. Something should be done about it, and that bus is ridiculous. And again, we have bus drivers that, that don't want to help. We had one last summer. I complained about it two months ago. Now, we're getting another one. We're changing every week. Sandra has to tell them where to go. They can't put wheelchairs on? Can't you train these people before you put them on the bus? I don't think it should be up to us to train them.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Will you also be able to stay after the meeting to talk this further with Allison and Mark? The, the last one that I have is Ms. Weaver.
My first comment or concern is the 65 Senior Easy Ride. I have been out there several times. We have it on Tuesday and Thursday, and I've had several drivers say, "I don't know how to load you." Now, I'm with Ms. O'Brien. You guys need to do training with these people if you're going to throw them all over to teach them whatever you need to teach them, because that's why I don't ride the bus. I don't want to be treated like that. But I should have that right to ride that bus and not feel, because this costing me more money than it has to. My second point is, all of the Project Mobility people and reservations are very nice. You got Gene, you've got Debbie, you've got Janet, you've got John, but we're getting tired, and they're getting, they're getting wore out. They're just getting wore out with all of the, you had 100 drivers on project that went down to 75, and there was no reason that I was, saw in the RTA budget where it had to go from 75, from 100 to 75. So, you have 75 drivers trying to do the amount of what 100 drivers should have, so the workload is too much, because the drivers were 75 to start with, and that, I mean, 100 to start with, and now it's down to 75. So, the drivers are stressed out, we're picked up late, and they won't change it, they won't change times, and I've been riding with RTA since 1981. So, Mr. Donahue, you need to do something about it. Or the Board needs to do something about it.
Well, again, I hope you'll stay after the meeting, so we can get specifics about which bus drivers you've had issues with, because they get months and months of training, including specific wheelchair tie-down, securement training, as well as training by the access center. So, we want to know who it is, so we'll make sure that that gets repaired, absolutely. If there's a problem out there, that's why we don't want you to wait. We want you to contact us, and each time we've had these meetings, we've provided people our direct contact information to do that. So, we'll get specifics from you, and we'll be happy to see if there's a problem with that driver. And as you probably are aware, we have video systems on all those buses, and that's why the sooner we get a complaint, the better, so we can pull the video from the bus, and that helps us when we have to deal with an employee.
I have a question for Ms. Smothers. You had a big sheet that you held up with, could you, no, I was wondering if you could transfer it to a smaller sheet of paper, or give it to me temporarily and let me copy it down? Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I believe there's no one else that will make a public comment. Okay, thank you. We now move on to item 12 of our agenda. That's board announcements. Are there any board announcements?
Um, yes, I have a comment. I'd like to thank the Board for, my, my dad passed away November the 15th, and I'd really like to thank the Board for sending me flowers and also a card as well. So, I really just want to say thank you so much for supporting me and my family at the time of need, my father's passing.
No other comments? Okay, then I don't think there's a need for an executive session. Since there's no need, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
So, move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.